Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the, what's today? February thirteenth meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee. If you would please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'm Jane Regio, a school committee member from Millville.
Erin Venaco, Millville.
Sarah Larkin, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Jessica Chaplin, student body rep.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Matt Ehrenworth, assistant superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, superintendent.
Okay. Jacob, what's up?
So with athletic programs, the only two sports really that are going on is basketball and indoor track. So varsity girls' record is one and seventeen, and they have their final game tonight, and their JV is ten and four. Varsity boys won their senior game last night, where the seniors on the team are recognized for their commitment and hard work, and they were very excited to win that game against Uxbridge. Indoor track finished out our season about two weeks ago, being placed fifth in our DVC. So for student organization, NHS, coming up in under three weeks is NHS's largest event, the Empty Bowl Dinner. This night is on Tuesday, February third, from five to seven. At this event, there will be auctions and raffles for the bowls that each member of the NHS has made over the past few months. Alongside the bowls, the NHS has been working hard each week by breaking off into committees, such as the Advertising and Decorations Committee, to do work before the event, and then actually planning what they'll do on the night of the event. And all of the proceeds from this event will be going directly to the food pantry, and we are hoping to make, I think, over $2,000 for that. For Student Council, right now, we have a state conference in Hyannis from March fourth to six. This three-day conference is jam-packed with leadership training and incredible experiences for our eleven delegates that are attending. Alongside the leadership training workshops, we attend guest speakers who talk about their leadership experiences and lessons they want us to learn. This conference also consists of electing state officers for the upcoming year, and we have Tony Marino, who is a junior, running for vice president of the state this year.
Good luck.
And we haven't had someone run for a state officer position since Anita a few years ago. Alongside the state officer elections, we also find out what Council of Excellence Award we will receive, based on the excellence book we turn in, which is basically, has all the summaries of all the projects we've done this year, and we're projected to be gold again after the past two years. And the final aspect of this that I would like to discuss is the Polar Plunge Fundraisers for Special Olympics, which is an organization based on inclusive athletics all throughout the state for children with special needs and disabilities. Each school that attends the conference has a fundraising team that begins in January and ends the first day of the conference, when we all take the plunge together to kick off the conference. And as of right now, we're ranked seventh in the state, about over fifty schools. We have raised twelve, sorry, twelve fifty, it actually changed since I wrote this, and we have numerous fundraisers scheduled over break to raise more money for this cause. Literally, seven days in a row, we're gonna be waking up at 8:00 AM to go canning at different locations to raise money for it. But the one fundraiser I'd like to bring up is the bake sale on February twenty-third from ten to one at Park and Shop, and we'd love to see a large turnout for that one, because it'll be our final fundraiser.
Okay. February twenty-third, ten to one. Any questions for Jacob? How many more days left for seniors?
Oh, gosh. Do you two know?
Jeez.
Yeah.
That's a good sign.
It's getting low.
They don't wanna leave. That's a great sign. Anybody else? Do we know where you're going to school next year?
I do not know yet. I'm still waiting to hear from a few more schools.
Okay. Well, keep us posted. Best of luck. I hope you get in the mall, and then have a tough decision to make.
Thank you.
And what are you doing next week?
Uh, fundraising.
Mom and dad aren't taking you on vacation?
I'm going to Maine for two days to tour you in Maine.
Ooh, okay. Enjoy.
Yeah, that'll be fun.
Yeah, that'll be fun. Enjoy. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do you wanna do that next?
Yeah, is that okay? If we take an item out of order?
I wanna take out of order.
Yeah, that'd be great. So we have a very special presentation this evening, I guess we could call it. Mr. Dudik is here with some of our scholars from our high school. We're really, really proud and pleased that BMR is being recognized by the College Board for a AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award. So I'd like Mr. Dudik and the rest of the team, Ms. Hunt and our students, to come forward and just speak a little bit, if you could, Mr. Dudik, about what this is and what it means and the recognition, 'cause it's a pretty awesome thing. And in the packet of each of our committee members is just a little summary of what Principal Dudik will discuss, or Ms. Hunt, or whoever's going to do that. But we're very pleased you're here.
Yes, we are.
We have a large group today. Thanks for having us today. It's always awesome to be able to recognize some of our students. It's always great, too, to get surprised. So I received an email, it was probably about a month ago, and it was from College Board, and I thought it was, yet again, here's a date that I'm missing to get some AP exam fees in. And I opened it up, and I saw that BMR is being recognized for a prestigious award. So I just wanted to read a little bit about the description, and then I'm gonna have Ms. Hunt just speak a little bit. Ms. Hunt is our AP Computer Science teacher. She's also the librarian, LMC. And we have two of our seniors here that were part of that class from last year. So this is a recognition from last year. So quickly, so BMR has earned the College Board Computer Science Female Diversity Award for achieving essentially high female representation in AP Computer Science principles. Schools honor with the AP Computer Science Diversity Award, have expanded young women's access to AP Computer Science. And in that, there's about 20,000 institutions that offer AP Computer Science. Eight hundred and eighteen achieved this important result during the eighteen-nineteen school year, and of that, six hundred and eighty-five schools recognized last year. So in 2019, we were one of 639 schools recognized for that category in Computer Science principles. So once again, you know, our population of students that took AP Computer Science, we had well over our 50 percent were for females, which to me is just a tremendous thing and an honor to be able to be a part of that. Just some quick data points. So in 2014, a Google study found that women are more likely to pursue Computer Science if they are given the opportunity in high school, and that, to me, I think is really important when we think about opportunities for all students, but in particular, our female students, when we're thinking about math and science. And I'm not too sure what our female students are doing. You could ask them, and we'll see what comes there. I don't know if there is a direct correlation with that. But just two other things that I think is really important in terms of opening doors for girls and women in particular. So Computer Science jobs are projected to grow 16% by 2028, and that's according to the Bureau of Labor stats. And the median pay for a computer, somebody in Computer Science is over $100,000, and there's thousands of jobs that are added every single year. So this is definitely a big demand. And despite growing demand, women only earn 18% of Computer Science bachelor degrees and make up a mere 28% of science and engineering workforce, and that's through the National Girls Collaborative Project. So I'm looking for girl power to take over our Computer Science world and math in the next couple of years. Ms. Hunt took on this challenge. She came to me a couple of years ago and said, "Mr. Dudik, I got this email. UMass Boston was offering a free professional development for teachers interested in getting into Computer Science and programming." She was one of three at BMR that said, "You know, I don't have a whole lot to do within summer. I'd love to educate myself and go through a workshop." I believe it was like four days, or?
It was a week long.
It was a week long. Yeah, five days, and we had three individuals in our building that did that. And I see Computer Science being a graduation requirement in Massachusetts pretty soon, and, you know, we've been doing this for two years. So again, I'm super proud of our girls, all of our students, Ms. Hunt as well. She's worked hard to get this off the ground, running, and it's always great to get an award one way or another. So, Ms. Hunt, do you mind?
Hi. Thank you for having us tonight.
Yeah.
So, Computer Science is one of the fastest-growing fields out there, and there's under-representation from all sorts of diverse backgrounds. So I believe it's really important to get it out there, and I think as a female teacher teaching it, it really helps to ease the gap between the traditional classroom to how it's trying to grow and be more diverse. And AP Computer Science principles is like an intro class, so it's not as intimidating as CSA, and it really has opened up doors, I think, for a lot of people in our school, which is great.
This is Erin Brown.
Hi, I'm Erin.
Hi, Erin.
Hi, I'm Elena Monson.
Hi, Elena.
So, do you mind sharing a little bit about your experience and possibly what you're getting yourself?
And you took this last year?
I did, yes.
Yeah? And?
So, last year, I was able to collaboratively experience the world of Computer Science, kind of like a taste test, if you will. I was able to creatively explore the online world in almost a simplistic way and combine STEM and art.
Yeah. I think the class really, like, introduced us to a lot more forms of abstract thinking. When you're thrown a task and you don't have all of the resources to do it, you figure out how to use what you have, and I think that was a really important thing that we had to learn through the class. So I think that gave us a lot of new tools in the world.
And that's the CSP. What is CSA?
CSA is...
CSA is a more coding-intensive. So CSP is the principles class, where you learn about the history of the Internet, you learn the basics of coding. The test is a combination of a digital portfolio submission and the typical, like, multiple-choice test at the end.
And are we considering, then, that next one, or just staying with the one?
It's a possibility. It's also offered the VHS, so it is available for students.
And would you guys have considered that, now that you know what you know?
I'd say yeah. I think it would have taken a while.
So do you know where you're going to school next year?
I'm still waiting to hear back from my top school.
Okay.
But currently, I'm looking at some schools in California.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
For computers or for art?
Foreign language.
Foreign language, wow. How about?
Currently, I'm making a decision between UMass Amherst and URI for environmental economics.
Oh, wow. Wow.
I feel smarter being in your presence.
Yeah, exactly.
Just so you know. That's incredible. Wow.
And if you need an internship, you can come and see us, and I'll hook you up with something in the business office.
That's great.
That's awesome. That's wonderful.
Nice work.
So, you're happy you took this, had this opportunity?
Yeah, definitely.
And would you encourage other women to give it a whirl?
Yeah. Like I said, it was a really cool introduction to more abstract thinking, and learning programming was really cool, to be able to create something on a computer and, like, see the progress you were making as you learned all these different tools. I think it was really cool.
Great work.
Anybody else?
I mean, just one quick thing.
How many women were in the class? How many people in the class, and how many women? Do you remember?
Um, I don't actually remember.
Do you know this year? Is it?
There wasn't that many.
There's about 60% women, I can think of.
Wow.
Yeah.
And is it running right now?
Yes, it is running again.
And a good number of women again?
Again, a lot of, yep.
That's awesome.
Yay.
I think we might get it again this year.
All right.
Nice work.
I mean, this class, I think, is really...
Not that we're not trying to discourage the men or anything.
No, we can't, but, I mean, I think it's, I mean, the Computer Science principles, you could have that fall into any sort of content area and grade level. I think you may even have a freshman in that class. So it is nine through 12. I mean, I think we had some senior-heavy class last year, but it's just, the class is right in the LMC during one of the periods, and they have their Chromebooks, and they're logged in to...
Did you pass the test at the end?
Yes.
That was our highest AP score. I think everyone had...
Is it really? Oh, okay.
Yep, so we had threes and fours across the board.
Nice.
And five.
A five?
Nice work.
Wow. Okay.
In the first year, you got five?
Yeah. That's, that's, for people who don't know, that's the highest score you can get, and, I mean, essentially, very few people get it.
Like, less than 4%.
Yeah, and it's...
Tremendous.
Almost guaranteed college credit at most places you've applied, I assume.
Nice work.
That's wonderful.
And it will be really great to see, as we continue to build our work at the middle school level, around Computer Science and artificial intelligence and engineering and STEM, to see what the interests will be, yeah, when they get to the high school and the courses that they'll be able to take at that point, if we're offering additional ones in addition to what both of you had. So keep up the great work, everybody. It's very exciting.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah, nice work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, can I mention one other thing, just 'cause the high school team is here?
Yeah.
Just real quick, so a huge shout-out to BMR High School. Our graduation and dropout data, the state just released today, actually at 5:00, so we can share publicly now, which I know Mr. Dudik shared with the staff already, but our graduation rate increased from 87% last year to 93.7% this year, which is huge, 5% in a year. And our dropout rate, which of course we want zero, but we are near that. We went from 2.2 last year to this year, .5.
Mmm.
Which is pretty remarkable. So a huge shout-out to the high school staff, leadership, students, teachers. Great, great work, everybody. Stay the course.
Okay. At this point in time, we will see if there's anyone who would like to address us for a public forum? Okay. Nope. All right. Warrants. We have payroll, field trip, high school to Mystic Aquarium, and minutes from November 1st and January 9th. Did we get those in here?
I have them.
Yep. Yep, you have them, okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda A.
So moved.
Moved by Wendy. Is there a second? Second by Karen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. Yay. So moved. School committee. We have a motion, that will entertain a motion to approve an early retirement incentive to Unit A members. If they retire effective June 30th, 2020, the district will pay $7,500 to employees who submit their intention to retire by March 13th of this year, 2020. The $7,500 will be taxed, is not pensionable, and will be paid by July 31st, 2020. Members would not be eligible for the sick leave incentive. Members who declared future retirement are eligible, and employees must be eligible to retire in the MTRS program. So, would anybody like to make that motion?
So moved.
Moved. By Sarah, second?
Second.
Second by Wendy? Any discussion? So we have done this in the past. We have tried to move it up some, so that people can have some better planning on their part.
Jane, could we just explain at home why we offer this? Just for those at home?
Yes, we can. So we try to offer an early retirement incentive to employees who are thinking about retiring, considering, eligible for retirement in their retirement system, but maybe thinking they'll stay a little later or not stay. And the incentive is like a bonus to that person, but what it does for the school district in setting our budget is generally gives us an opportunity, then, to bring in a new employee at substantially discounted.
Right.
Somebody who's ready to retire has probably been in the district for quite some time, has a relatively high salary, and somebody new coming in would be potentially lower in that scale, and save us much more than the $7,500 that we probably pay out.
I just think it's important for the people at home...
To understand why.
To understand why we're offering an incentive and what benefit that has on the district and the budget during the budget process.
And to that end, our budget, bottom line, last year, when we offered the incentive, we saved just over $70,000 by offering the incentive.
Thank you.
Any other question, discussions, concerns? And if they have already indicated that they're going to retire and they have received some retirement payment so far, that whatever they've received comes off the $7,500.
That's right.
Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions. Okay. So approved. Do you mind going out of order?
I'm perfectly fine with that.
So we're gonna go out of order again. We have some visitors who are gonna talk about our scope of services for our capital plan, review of facilities. Gentlemen, would you, you can pull up another chair, I guess? I don't know. It seems far back today.
This is B. Jane, this is B.
We have a handle that I'd like to share with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
While I'm handing it out, my name is Jim Barrett, and principal with Romeo Roseanne Anderson. We're very pleased to have the opportunity to work with Blackstone Millville in this study of its existing facilities. And joining me this evening, this gentleman, who's handling the car around the table. Greg, do you wanna let him know who you are?
Sure. I am Greg Smalley. I'm the project manager for this project.
Oh, okay.
Hi, I'm Doug Loujo. I'm with Consulting Engineering Services for the Mechanical Electrical Engineers.
Oh. No offense, wouldn't want your job, but...
Thank you.
You probably were interested. Okay.
Small glitch in the technology.
Yeah. Oh, a small glitch. We have a glitch.
Oh, Jesse's pulling it up now? Jesse's.
Yeah.
Great. Pulling it up now. Let me just go double-check here.
Do you gentlemen wanna introduce you? Well, thank you.
We have the paper copies. Do you wanna start?
Introduce yourself.
Are you okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, we can, the first, as you open it, the first page is simply a mapping of Blackstone and Millville. It has the regional school district facilities that are made part of this study through the request for qualifications. And our work will be to assess the various facilities, come to understand basically the bones of the buildings, if you will. Through Doug's team, we'll be able to assess quality of mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection systems, as example. Greg, as part of our architectural team lead, will assess the facilities in terms of fit and finish, quality of material, and expected life, expected level of life left within the product. I guess that's the best way to speak to it.
You may have some in the afterlife already.
Yeah, right. That hits the lab.
Many districts are with you in that regard.
That's right. Sure.
So useful life expectancy is often exceeded.
Oh, there you go.
Perfect. Thank you. This next slide touches on the key issues or key deliverables of a study like this. The first, as I mentioned, assessment of the facilities themselves. The second, actually reaching out for input from both staff, faculty, students, and the community at large, coming to better understand curricular needs, how things may have changed over the last 30, 40, 50 years, and what types of programmatic changes and needs might be in place. The fourth speaks to a CIP, a Capital Improvement Plan, and its development of that type of planning that affords the district the opportunity to prioritize needs, come to understand where the money's best can be spent, and have it set up in a way where work that gets done one year doesn't have to be undone in the second year to get at the next layer of work, always an important element. And then lastly, in our opinion, most importantly, community outreach. Having the larger community come to understand the needs, have the larger community come to understand the options, and ultimately, have the larger community come to understand the direction that is being recommended for moving forward.
Could you advance some slides for me? Yeah, there you go. So we put together a schedule, and these are always just our first stab at what it will take to get from one end to the other. And the timeline is certainly achievable with the October date to move it to your capital planning committees from both towns. So we've started with a January date. We know we're in the middle of February now, so we'll be condensing a little bit of this down, but this is a pretty generous schedule to start with. And I've been in town the last couple of days, met with all of your custodial, the heads for each one of the schools, a great group of people, very accommodating, very knowledgeable of their own buildings, and surprisingly, everybody had plans for their buildings, which, after 50 years, is pretty amazing in most places. And not only did they have the original plans, they had all the updated plans. So we've taken what is germane to us, we'll have that scanned electronically, give you back an electronic copy of those plans as well, along with the paper, and then we use the electronic for our side. So you have quite a bit more that might be usable if we go through it, and it's worth it, it might be worth scanning it and getting it back to you to complete the documentation for all your buildings. As Jim was saying, there's a number of pieces in here, stakeholder input, which is typically the students, the teachers, the administration, and then we try to reach out to the parents in one form or another, sometimes an online survey, sometimes a written survey. Same thing with the students. We're just trying to get an idea of what works for you in the building on a day-to-day basis from a facility's point of view. So we want to understand not only the physical aspects of the building, but how does it impact the people who use it, and how that might change recommendations that we might make. Get to the second part of the survey, part of the schedule, and there we are moving through, meeting with the administration, meeting with the people from each one of the schools, refining the data that we've taken, and make sure that we have not left something out or included something. I'm coming to understand that you have quite a bit of work planned over the summer with Millville going over to propane, losing the oil, losing the oil tank, losing the boilers, using the circulator pumps. Made Doug's job a lot easier when I learned that, but it also makes, it makes a big difference in how the CIP starts to forecast for that building. So it's that type of stuff we wanna make sure we're not saying, "This is what we think you should do," and it's not jiving with something that you already have on your planning. And then we'll refine the plan, we'll get it down to something similar to this, which is what we wrote for Millbury.
Yeah.
Which I passed around earlier before we started, and then we'll tailor that to be whatever format is most useful for you as we finish that up. On our next slide here, we broke this up into research, refine, and report. So there's two pieces in the research. One is to gather up all the data we can, the second is to compare it back to give you some benchmarks. This is typical of a map we would prepare. Massachusetts, we use the MSBA guidelines for the size of rooms based on the curriculum that's being taught in the room. So we'll prepare a map similar to this of each one of your buildings or a floor plan. The blue are the areas that are larger than MSBA guidelines, and the red are those that are much smaller, and then colors in between come close to MSBA guidelines. It just, more than anything, gives you the ability to say to yourselves and to the public, the building is functional, it is within what the state would consider to be reasonable, or it's not. And larger than MSBA guidelines can also be an issue, because you start to get too much space, and your heating and cooling and lighting, more space than you need. So that becomes fairly useful for districts that can be either contracting or growing. The second thing we look at is more code and life safety-oriented. So here are red, or for accessibility issues. So here are red, or for accessibility issues, which, yeah, so it happens with the older buildings, when you start looking at those. The green are facility issues. So these are things that don't fall into a building code or life safety, but might be just maintenance or worn out. And so it's an issue that will rise or be reported differently. And then blue are code, building code issues. So those and ADA issues tend to overlap to a certain degree, but building code issues can be pieces that were not grandfathered. Typically, life safety or fire code more than building code.
So are those then the things due first?
Those are where the majority of the category, the most dire categories fall.
Yeah.
And all of your buildings by now, by 1996, had to be compliant with ADA. You can do that via programmatic accessibility or facility accessibility. So an existing building that might not be accessible, you can move a program around, but a new building that you build or a building that you significantly renovate has to be fully accessible. So we'll.
Just to confirm, I'm sorry.
What's that?
To confirm, these are just sample plans. These are our buildings.
Those are just samples.
I see, those are not our.
Yeah, we're not that bad.
Ours would be red.
No.
Red.
This is what it will look like when they do this.
Yes.
Our, might look like this. These aren't our best ones.
Another area we'll offer some suggestions will be potentially reusing spaces that you have that were designed for one particular teaching methodology and are now more useful in a different modality. This example here was just a sloped floor auditorium in a building that we had done some work with, and then turned it around to make it a bi-level teaching space and self-directed working space. So it's not necessarily the focus of a facilities assessment, but it does serve to give you some idea what you might be able to do with short money in the immediate term. And then we start to refine a little bit, which is when we bring together the various aspects of facilities quality index. And this is best understood by how functional is the building, how appropriate it is for what you're doing with it, how often do you use it, and what would it cost to bring it to the best condition. So you take those factors, mix them together, and we'll start to prioritize not only from physical condition, but from functionality for the district on what you might want to approach first. So a lot of pieces in play there.
Put it in the pool.
It's all going towards trying to get you to put the money where you're gonna get the most immediate return on it. Sometimes it's a long-distance investment, but it takes that cost off of your books further down the line. A big part of that is what Doug's group does.
Thanks, Greg. So as I mentioned, we would be looking at all of your mechanical, electrical systems, realizing some of them are probably aged beyond their useful life. We're gonna come up with a lot of different spreadsheets and show you what the condition of each system is, and eventually what the replacement cost will be, when they might have to be replaced, or when we think they might have to be replaced. This is just a sample of, a small portion of a project that we did. We did some energy upgrades in a district, and the building committee came to us and said, well, we wanna do everything that will have a five-year or less payback. So we kinda came up with some simple line items and described to them what a rebate might be from the utility company for each one of these items, and we ended up implementing everything. Actually, we went up to seven years of payback. So it was kind of a neat little exercise that they had us do. It was part of a solar program that we were implementing in one of the schools. And so as part of your CIP, and when we tell you or when we reaffirm for you that some of your systems are aged, you know, we'll make recommendations as to what we could replace it with, and when we think that replacement ought to happen, working back and forth with you folks as well. But what I wanna point out is, we're gonna be looking at energy efficiency. And we wanna know what you guys are consuming for energy today, and if you replaced, I understand you're replacing some boilers this summer, if you did that, and maybe you guys did this for that project, what will you be saving? You're spending so many dollars per year on this building today. If you upgrade to more energy-efficient systems, hopefully you're gonna have a savings and perhaps a payback from the systems. So we'll be happy to share some thoughts with you on that as well.
So the third segment from our schedule that we wanted to focus on was that of reporting. Greg touched on a sample of a document that serves as the vessel, if you will, what ultimately lands in the district as the physical copy of what's been done. But part of that reporting is stakeholder engagement, and I mentioned this earlier, being able to reach out to faculty, to staff, to students, to the larger community in terms of understanding what are the things about the various facilities within Blackstone Millville that you certainly don't wanna see changed, because it represents the very highest and best of what you are able to deliver educationally. And also, come to find, where are those areas that serve as roadblock to improvement, where we feel that some type of physical change or modification might elevate the opportunity relative to education? Ultimately, it's about interaction, communication, and consensus building. And we recognize that this is a regional system. Our firm has had opportunity to work in many regionalized school systems, where we do understand it's not simply one community coming to grips with a decision. And that's something that's very important to understand. We will work within both communities as needed. Could you please explain, 'cause I love the explanation, what this picture is indicating? Yeah. Well, this is a gymnasium floor, and within it, a mapping of a particular campus for an educational user. The people coming to the auditorium that evening, we always give an agenda, and the agenda identifies how we're gonna take care of their time. We never want to have somebody come in and not know where they're going next, and we want them to know they're gonna get out of here. We're gonna spend an hour and a half with you, we're gonna make it very effective use of time, and we're gonna make sure you're out on time. Coupled with that, in this particular case, we had three questions in the upper right-hand corner. So as people came into the gymnasium, they saw their school on the floor, and they recognized it. They didn't wanna walk on it, because it looked like artwork to them. And the three questions were, tell us your favorite place within the campus, that may be the red sticky note. Tell us your least favorite place on campus, that would be the blue sticky note. Tell us a place you take a friend or a visitor to the school where you wanna have a conversation and feel it shows the very best of what this school has to offer. Coupled with that, we ask people not only to put their sticky note down on the map where they think that occurs, but to jot a note down on it. So it does a couple things. First, we had encouraged people to walk out on it. We got them out there. And then they started dropping their sticky notes. And you can see in the lower right-hand corner of the image on the screen, you see a grouping of blue.
Yeah, big blue.
That's a parking lot that nobody liked, as an example. At the center of campus, near the entrance to the facility, they had recently done a lot of work trying to improve the exterior space and make it be more of a gathering space. The response there was, people were appreciative of it. People recognized that effort, people saw it as effective, and people encouraged more of that type of thinking within that campus community. The yellows are more distributed, as you see them, but again, this does two things for us. One, it's at length. From 30 yards back looking at it, it creates a pattern across the campus mapping, and it shows you big-picture issues. But then when you walk up and you start reading the individual's particular reasons for their response, they can be pretty varied, and that's the layering of information that we seek. Part of the reason why we do these types of exercises is we understand when people come to a community workshop or when they get together, not everybody is comfortable speaking in the same way, so we encourage different layers of conversation. We bring everybody together, we'll speak in a large group, we'll break down into small breakout groups. We'll offer an exercise like this where somebody can work individually. And we feel that in doing that, we can reach more people, get better information, and be able to have better input for our team to be able to be responsive to. Is there anything else in that map that?
No. You described it perfectly.
Pretty cool.
Lastly, what we'd like to speak to is our experience serving MSBA. And this is a listing of our experience over the last 10 years of MSBA work. So we're very familiar with the MSBA program. We're very familiar with the various requirements, many of the goals, all of the information that's given as guideline by MSBA. And this is just simply a listing of the communities that we have served over the last 10-year window in terms of being able to help communities work through processes like these that take care of two things. First, the immediacy of need, those capital improvements that have to happen because a roof is failing and you're trying to weigh out that investment versus boiler replacement or some other pressing issue. This'll allow you to develop a capital plan to handle those immediate needs. It will also help you develop strategies for overarching, longer-term needs that may be those types that would be having to go in front of MSBA for consideration. And that is kind of the dual-pronged result of this type of study effort. Many of these communities started in this very place, wanting to understand their community across all schools, all kind of controlled elements within the district. And one thing I always remind people is, the school district is often the largest landholder within a community or within a set of communities. And that said, it's one of the biggest investments, it's one of the biggest responsibilities. In terms of stewardship, it's one of the most important sets of decisions that communities have to make along the way. And we feel this type of thinking that you're about to kind of press on into is some of that very important first-step thinking that has to happen to help guide those decisions. And with that, that's our presentation at this point, but we're happy to answer any other questions or comments, concerns that you may have at this time.
Well, I'm very excited. That's my comment, but does anybody have any questions or?
I'm very excited to see what you recommend with our common areas, going back to this repurposing. All of our high school academic rooms have a common area in the middle, so.
With no doors.
It's very outdated.
With no doors.
And I'm curious to see where you're gonna put the pool.
Yeah. We did like the pool in the picture.
What school, the pool?
It don't look like a, if that's a high school, that's amazing, but it's probably a college. High school. Anybody else? Anyone?
Does part of the plan talk about the forecasted population, like student population, versus the amount of space our buildings have?
So one of the diagrams that we showed was comparing MSBA guideline to actual population within the school. We will do that overlay study for each of the schools, so using the information available from the district in terms of anticipated enrollments, and ultimately student projections for the buildings, be able to map that. We can also map it over time, so that if it's an increasing or decreasing scenario, we'll be able to see how that fluctuates over a 10-year window. MSBA typically caps it at eight years of looking out in terms of enrollment data. Often, demographers will push out to 10 years or so in terms of their reporting. But we'll take that information and do exactly that exercise as part of our study work.
Just because I'm thinking of the amount of space our buildings have and how that relates to, you know, common areas that would be suggested or, you know, changed. And the more change because of our population either increasing or declining, you know, we have a lot of empty space. So I'm just curious what you could do with that based on, you know, our forecasted population.
Sure. Yeah, we will pay particular attention to utilization rate, we'll pay particular attention to MSBA guideline, we'll pay particular attention to that direction your population is heading.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I don't think we've ever had anything like this.
So we have.
Oh, well, this one's very impressive.
Very impressive. Kim Shaver-Hood, just the high school.
Oh, when we did the roof?
No, 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 well before. A document that sat on a desk. Before any of our time.
So.
So it's up to us to make sure that this goes up, you know, the community engagement part is really critical, especially the capital planning boards on both communities. It's really critical.
And as you move through that, we'll stay with you all the way through your capital planning boards, anything that's needed from our end as you move through that. It's usually a lot easier if it's someone outside of the town saying, this is what we think you need. Based on all these other communities we work with, here's what we recommend you do. So you have us through whenever you're done with that stuff.
That's wonderful.
So how far out in the timeline is, does the community engagement start?
Well, we're going to sit back now that we have all the plans and everything else for the buildings, and we'll be up here next week going through the buildings, doing our physical assessment, because everybody else is out of the building, which makes it easier for us.
Good timing.
And then it'll probably be somewhere, I'm gonna guess somewhere end of March, beginning of April, somewhere in that range, where we can be able to put in front of everybody, here's what we found from a physical point of view, and here's what we're thinking, and what do you guys think? And get some feedback that way. If, I'd like to see if we can get student and teacher input before we met with the public, to say, here's what the end-users are doing. Now tell us what you think.
Yep.
Yeah, let's say late March, early April, somewhere in there.
And is it common for you to do all facilities at the same time? I mean, it makes most sense, but.
In communities where they may have a multi-facility district, where they choose to do less than all of the facilities, one cautionary note that we always offer is, it makes it very difficult to make very solid decisions, because there's always that lurking, or, I guess I'll use the word lurking, lurking question, that are we actually capturing the full snapshot? Is there opportunity in one of these other buildings that we're not seeing? And honestly, I'd say about 90% of the time where we enter into an engagement where it is a portion or a percentage of all of them ultimately expands to each of the facilities. Because through the process, they recognize the value of what is coming out of each of the building studies.
I don't know. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Exciting news for us.
Thank you.
And well, greatly needed, greatly needed. Long overdue, that's the word I was looking for.
Thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The gift.
Thank you.
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 Oh, great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good work ahead. All right, we're gonna go back to the school committee and now talk about where we are with the regional agreement. So I think Sarah and Jason, turning that over to you.
Yes.
It's Jesse.
Jesse.
And those aren't us. Those aren't us.
Mm-hmm. Yes, they are. The middle one is, the other two, the band is a.
The two bands are not.
No, just, I think they.
They're busy tonight, Jesse. Thanks for the.
Yeah, thanks, Jess.
Would this information help the regional conversation?
Yeah, probably.
Jesse told me I could point it anywhere and it would work.
In the future, it will. The purpose is to meld the two of them together to figure what the best choices are.
Well, and from like, he mentioned somebody from the outside looking in with no attachment.
The timeline doesn't match up.
Is a big, is a big key.
No, but. It does, it does, if we eventually want to suggest alternatives.
Right.
Because we'd have the backup for the alternatives.
Right, right.
Yep. The space piece of this is huge.
Right, right. And especially, I mean, we put on the roof at the high school, and it is a very old building, like, I think this is much needed to look at.
Agreed. And I think it's gonna be all red. I hate to tell you.
I think so, too.
That's okay, we need to see it.
Yeah, I agree. Sarah.
On that happy note.
Jason.
Moving on. So this is gonna seem familiar, because it's very similar to what we discussed at the joint meeting, but we have tweaked a few things based on the feedback, so I'm gonna provide you with another overview of recommended changes to the regional. So, I'm going to provide you with another overview of recommended changes to the regional agreement. If you have any questions, let me know.
Okay.
Also, I'd just like to thank again everyone on the RAC. We've had months of meetings and they've really shown up and done the work. So, it's important work. Moving on. For those at home, what is the regional agreement? Basically, it's our governing document. It's going to explain how the school committee is composed, when elections take place, how we run. And it also describes the legal and financial connections with the member towns. Why do we need to change it? Well, it hasn't been amended since, I believe it was amended in 2014. Before that, it was 1982, and since then, a lot has changed. Laws have changed, DESI, Department of Education regulations have changed, the district has changed. So, we also need just to match current practices and current interests within the district. Those are our three main reasons. The process? We formed the RAC committee in spring, sometime in the spring of 2019. The school committee voted to form the committee and appointed representatives from Board of Selectmen in both towns, VinCom, parents and just community, just, and community members, and of course, two school committee members. We have reviewed extensively the agreement, made some recommendations. We're at the end of that process now. So, the next step is to send it back to us, back to the school committee. The school committee will vote on the recommended changes. Then, the Board of Selectmen will vote to put it on a warrant either at a special town meeting or at the annual town meeting. Then, a vote will take place. We need a majority of voters to approve. Then, we resubmit it back to DESI for final approval.
And Sarah, it's a majority in each town?
Yes, in both towns. Yep. Any questions?
And it's the full plan. You vote, when they vote, they vote the full.
That's important. The full plan.
The full document.
Can't make any amendments.
No.
No changes on the floor.
Nope.
It's all or nothing.
Mm-hmm.
So, what are the recommended changes?
There are many.
These are the recommended changes that were discussed, or is these, like, all of them?
This is all of them.
This is, and what's ending up in the proposed new.
Yeah.
Just, I was just curious if it was, we had heard recommended changes that we all were okay with, and then there were some that needed to go back and be discussed.
Yeah, and we did, we revisited issues and made some changes. This is an overview, so it's not really going to get into some of the, like, we don't like this word.
Right, okay.
Change that, but those were taken into account and addressed.
Okay.
If I can, Sarah, in your packets, you have two handouts that we'll be using, you know, across the both communities, but one of them outlines all the changes that were made. So, in addition to this.
Okay.
And we're going to put those on the website.
Okay, great.
And share them out. Okay. So, the first two on this slide address reflect current practices. So, this isn't a change, this is something that we needed to put into the agreement that we're already doing. So, the first one, grade range, it adds language to include pre-K, which we already do. And then, the next one, school committee appointments, it adds, school committee members will be appointed if there's a vacancy, because there was nothing in the agreement that dealt with that. Correct?
Our policy is not the agreement.
The third item deals with when elections are going to be held. It reflects current practice, but is going to allow for the school committee to hold its own elections if one of the towns chooses to change its election date. So, right now, both towns hold elections the first Monday in April. There was some talk about changing that in one of the towns, which would have messed us up, because as a school committee, because of the way that we're set up and when we hold our elections, or how it's written into the agreement, it has to be on the same date.
Yeah, because, because both towns vote on members from both towns, then you have to have the election on the same date.
Yep. So, if one town changes it, we have to have a provision in the agreement that says what happens. So, the new language would allow the school committee to hold its own elections if one of the towns changes the date. Questions? The next change, school committee vote, it just defines that an affirmative or an approved vote is a majority of those present, because that wasn't in there.
But there still needs to be a quorum.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, and it defined quorum, but it never defined what a positive vote was. But that's unless indicated otherwise in the agreement, because there are other times where it's a majority of the entire committee. Yes. It's worded.
Yeah, and jump in whenever, especially if I'm wrong. Okay, the second deals with post-grad students, allows charging tuition for students wishing to acquire additional skills. This isn't something that we see right now, but we're putting it into the agreement in case with changing, changes in the curriculum, changes in our career development program, we would be able to do so. The next one, student placement, and this is the big one. The school committee may reassign grades to different schools with a two-thirds vote and more than six months' notice. And we're going to go into detail on this one. So, the purpose or the goal of this change is to allow for fair and equitable educational opportunities for all students in the district. The language creates a process for reorganizing grade configurations. It does not move grades. It creates a process for doing so. It requires a public hearing before the vote of the school committee. It requires a two-thirds majority of the school committee in order to approve the change. And it must take place by January 1st in order to go into effect for the following school year. And the purpose of that is to allow for time to get everyone on board, just to carry out the change. Questions so far?
So, the language in, that's being recommended here is language only that outlines a process for recommending changes to grade configuration.
Right.
It does not change the configuration.
Right.
Right now, we do not have existing language that allows us to even strategize what that would look like, because it's not authorized through the governance document. So, this just proposes a process that we would put into the regional agreement so that if approved, we would be able to discuss what that, or what those changes could look like. But right now, we can't get into any detail because we don't have the language in our agreement that authorizes that. Am I, that's how that's framed?
Yes. So, more on that process. It would, it's going to involve extensive analysis of issues around reorganization. The admin, should, should this process be put into the agreement? And the admin would first draft a plan, present it to the committee. The committee, should they, would probably provide feedback, and then hold public hearings on the plan so that we can get feedback from both communities, everyone has a voice. Then, it would be, come to a vote. And if two-thirds of the school committee approves the vote, and the vote is before January 1st, the district would then have time to implement the change for the following year.
Is this two-thirds of the entire committee?
Yes. Oh, yes. I should mention that. That's one of them where it's not just of those present, it's, you have to have six, right?
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Yes, worded of all committee members.
Yeah. Moving on. So, there was no language in the agreement regarding emergency placement of students. So, the first bullet is a provision allowing for temporary relocation of students if there are issues that make a building unusable. And it would have to be, in terms of temporary, it's defined as less than two weeks.
Yeah.
Or like mold, for example.
Again, I was going to say, again, if it's into words, the practice we're currently doing.
Right.
We had an issue at the school, we moved the students, or we had a water issue and some came, you know, we, just allows us the opportunity in emergency situations for limited time.
The second, language around town leased buildings, it clarifies current practice of towns' insurance responsibilities. Next. There's a lot of language around budget assessments and debt. None of it is actually a substantive change in current process or practice. We didn't have a lot of the language that we needed in the agreement. So, basically, we're clarifying language around, whoo, that's not it, amended to reflect current practices in state law.
The district leases, the town owns.
Any questions about that?
No.
Great. We added language, should a new member town, or a new town decide that they want to join our beautiful district, we needed to clarify the process. Questions on that? And finally, we had, we added language, should a member town choose to withdraw from the district? It clarifies the responsibilities of the withdrawing town and clarifies that the withdrawal of a member town means the dissolution of the region. It talks about the obligations, what comes next. The last bullet, regional agreement review, what?
Oh, oh, sorry. I didn't see your hand.
Thank you, I need to be tapped.
No, actually, it's about this, so you can read it first.
Oh, it's about the last one? Regional agreement review requires school committee to review the regional agreement every five years.
I was just going to ask what that required.
It doesn't necessarily mean that there's a new RAC.
But does it have to be brought to the town every five years? Or is it just?
No, the committee would just.
The committee has to bring it up and put it on their agenda, say, "Is there any need? Does somebody have any?" Now, it requires the committee to put it on the agenda every five years. If a town wants the committee to consider something in regard to the agreement and wants to come before the committee in, in two years from now and say, "Hey, we'd like you to consider, you know, painting all the school," I don't know what it would be, but something that significantly changes the governance or the document, then a town could, and the school committee would then need to decide, do they create another RAC and study that issue or not study that issue? So, it can be done at any, before, the old agreement was like, if it's two years and the certain Monday in May, you know, it was very convoluted. Now, it's every five years, the school committee will consider it. Do we need it to do it or not? You know, are there new laws? Are there new whatever? But if a town or, you know, a member community wanted us to consider something, they would come before the school committee and we can do that.
You can do it every year if you want.
Yep, every year if you want. But the school committee can say, "Yay or nay."
What's next? Okay. We have produced an amended regional agreement. We have sent it for preliminary review from DESI, just to make sure that we have everything in order. Sending it to district and town councils, it's already been done once.
Yes, we had our council review, Blackstone Council's reviewed, and at some point, our sense Millville may push it to their council, but now, at this point, their town administrator has reviewed it.
Yes. So, there will be a plan to communicate with and get feedback from citizens in both towns. We're working on that. Probably going to be a Facebook Live. Somebody's going to get drafted to do that by the chair. And public forums, more traditional public forums. We need to have a vote here. You guys need to look it over and approve it, hopefully. And then, it will be sent to the towns for a vote. Again, majority needed in both towns for approval. Then, we send it off for final approval from DESI, and we'll have a new regional agreement, an amended regional agreement, not a new one.
But it will become the regional agreement.
Yes.
So, the timeline of what is next? We do have a time limit on when we can place something on the warrants for this year's town meeting, so do we feel we're going to meet that deadline?
Yes. We are going to the, both boards of selectmen on Tuesday.
Okay. I think we can also put a placeholder, too, that holds it if we're not ready for wording, like if we didn't get the DESI back or.
DESI.
But both Blackstone and Millville are on this Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yep.
But it can, it can be approved and then still go to, it's got to go to DESI after that anyway.
Yes, it goes to DESI.
So, by the way, waiting.
She said preliminary review right now.
That's where we're at now.
We're there, we're waiting.
There was also a lot of conversation about contingent upon. So, this, this would be going to the towns prior to the school committee voting, but if they chose to do it, it would be contingent upon the school committee's approval.
Right.
When do we need to vote on it as a committee?
So, we.
Should we vote on it before the Board of Selectmen?
So, no, we're bringing it to the Board of Select. We are saying that this is the, not this, where is it?
This is it.
Is it the draft? The one that says draft?
We don't have a hard copy.
Yeah, no, we didn't, we didn't put it.
No, we didn't put one.
We didn't put it in the back.
But we have a proposed regional agreement. That's what we'll be bringing to the Board of Selectmen with this review of what we've done. But, but this is essentially, we will show them next Tuesday what we intend to bring to the school committee meeting, March 12?
Yes. Although, yes, yep, we could, we could, we do have a February 27th meeting, so we could, Bridgette did share, so we could, in fact, move that up to February 27th if we wanted to.
I think we should.
Yeah.
The earlier the better.
Possibly, yeah.
Because that, and we should have hopefully heard from DESI by that point, their preliminary. And then, we will approve this, and that's what we will then share with community members and staff and whoever else.
And DESI has seen the document, they've been kept in the loop.
Right.
Hopefully, there aren't any last-minute surprises, like.
You know, so.
But our consultants seem confident that they would have kind of told us it was already.
And they're going to be here for those meetings, correct?
Which ones?
The consultants.
They'll attend, no, they'll attend anything we need them to.
Yeah.
One will be at the Millville meeting Tuesday evening.
I think, I think that's definitely important to have, again, an outsider come in and have the conversation.
A more polished presenter, you mean?
No. No.
I just, they have, they have, they have the support, they have the, because they've done this. And you're doing a great job.
The committee's meeting again on the March 6th, March something?
It's, it kept changing. Yes, because it was initially the 12th. So, we have school committee meeting the 12th, so we had to move it to a different date. Yeah, let me see. If it was, is it the 10th?
Yes, March 10th.
What day of the week is that?
Tuesday.
That wasn't one of our, from earlier?
No. No, it's not a whole date on that.
Okay. Six or seven, Sarah? Six, seven?
Six.
Six. So, that's when you'll get a plan together for who's going to try to go talk to whom or do Facebook Live or do?
I can't.
It's very.
Is that when it should get put on our agenda?
That's what they said about this.
What?
We can do the vote on the 27th.
Before it's on live, yeah.
Yeah, February 27th. Which would make sense because we, the committee should approve before we go forward with that.
Yeah. Can we send out, have we sent out the full copy of the changes to the committee?
No. Nope. You sure can? Yeah. I can send it in the Friday, in the Friday update, if you want to see it ahead of time.
Light reading.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should. You should.
I'll, I'll send it tomorrow in the Friday update.
But you do have kind of two, what changes are being made and then a parents' one? How will this impact me?
I mean, that those are just, the abridged version would be helpful. And for parents to look at this from the perspective of just that, I mean, how does this impact my student or me as mom or dad or grandma or whoever?
I think, I think the student placement thing is gonna be the big, the big thing. And I think it, it, the way it's outlined here, it gives them a voice. So, I think in previous years, we've, they've always, that was the biggest concern. But in this agreement, it's outlined the process. So, it's not something that's just gonna take place. So, in this, what you just shared, it shows that, you know, it's discussed, stakeholders are involved. And I think if that's in the agreement, I think that's the biggest piece that the parents wanna know about. So, it's not something that's gonna happen overnight and they're not gonna be aware. So, I think that's really important in this whole process.
I think exactly to your point, we're asking for the language to do the analysis.
Yeah.
Right, cause if they start asking, well, what are you planning? Jason's group already said, like, he's not gonna spend the time doing the exercise without having the ability to actually move forward with it.
But also, the planning is gonna come back to us and back to the communities. So, you know, it's not, and I think that was their biggest concern, you know, a while back when we've done this a number of times, is always like, how is this transformation going to take place? If there's a transformation, so to put the lang-
It goes transformations too, so that's what's different too.
And I think putting the language in that, you know, you'll have an opportunity to have a voice in this process, in the language, I think is a, is a huge step.
And that's another one of the purposes of our capital assessment. So that we can see where the space is being utilized appropriately, where it's not being utilized, and what our options could be to best serve the programs that we want to have our students involved.
Would they provide input on that, like options for?
They can, they can. They're not gonna design a new space based on this project. But it actually has, in, in the past, in other districts, led to that. Should we decide that we want to move forward with a core renovation, you know, and we have an entire district plan for what the programs are gonna look like and how the facilities are gonna serve the programs for the students? Then we present an entire package to MSBA and they're much more likely to entertain that than just fix our building.
Absolutely, and yeah, Matt just said that perfectly. And I think the fact that we've had two core renovation proposals not go through MSBA, clearly, they're looking for something significantly different than what we've put forward. And I think to those that have been asking, you know, that are watching home or that will watch, is what's going on with the high school project? Where are we at with that? We, you know, we have these two parallel processes, we hope, running that will allow us, exactly what Matt said, to put together a far more comprehensive district plan. And that, I think, would make a lot more sense, in particular, with the direction of what you're moving the high school with the career development work that we've been doing. It'll definitely be part of that work as well, so.
And I think just stressing that goal that you highlighted even in this, is that it's to offer fair and equitable educational opportunities for all the students.
Everybody.
And we, we don't have that right now. You heard, you heard in the meeting with the elementary principals, with the budget.
Yeah.
The STEM and STEAM offerings, ones every other week, ones every week. Some teachers have, you know, teacher meeting time every week, some have it every other week. We don't have that equitable piece in place yet.
Yep, we don't.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Tara.
Anybody else? Well, I do, Sarah, wanna thank you. We're only halfway through this, but they're, like, like Sarah said, there's, people have really committed to this. And people have shown up and our, our consultants have been great. They're going above and beyond. And we'll show up when we need them, so if somebody's going to a meeting and you think you need them, they'll come. And I'm sure they'll be here on the 27th, one or the other, if their schedules allow, so if we're gonna do that, we can ask them that as well.
Absolutely, yep.
But it's, it's exciting to watch this process, even though it's frustrating, I'm sure, for you. It's doing what we need to have done, so, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, superintendent.
Thanks, so I know we've, we've kind of shifted these out of order a little bit, but that's fine. The next item under my report would be item C, approval of the restorative time supervisor MOA in your packet. If you remember back in October, September, October, the committee, I had asked for permission to enter into negotiations or conversations with unit A around creating a restorative time supervisor. We eliminated central detention and we were looking to do something more proactive in terms of helping address students' behavioral needs. And so, we did propose a program outline to the unit A, the team at the middle school, a teacher's team at the middle school and high school. It did go through a few iterations, but at the end of our conversation, we were able to get to what is in your packet this evening. And I will just read it quickly, so it's, you know, kind of in the record, if that's okay?
Yeah, no, I was gonna, so, yes, please do.
So, the program outline, this model provides each student with an opportunity for deeper behavioral reflection while still holding the students accountable. Students will be responsible for completing a reflection exercise that leads them through the process of identifying their behavioral missteps and determine what changes they can make moving forward. The restorative time staff member will explain the reflection activity and expectations for its completion. Each student will then meet with the assistant principal to review their reflection and make a plan of action moving forward to address or change the behavior. And so, we are running this Monday through Thursday, after school, 45 minutes each session, with a stipend for $2,500.
Isn't that the high school too?
Yes, middle and high school, that should say middle and high school. I will fix that.
So, two sentences or one part?
It's $2,500 per building. That should be, that should read middle and high school.
Is that $2,500 for the full year?
So, yeah, so when we started this conversation, it was, the hourly stipended rate was under $35 an hour, which is the contractual agreed-upon rate. But because the implementation of it came, I would say, fairly long thereafter, we're just about under 20 weeks, so the stipended rate is about $40 an hour. I did not want to go back to the bargaining unit and discuss changing the stipend, it would reset this entire process. It's a one-year proposal, so it's a trial for this year. So, we're looking for the committee to approve the remainder of this year at the $2,500, which is at about $40 an hour, which we understand is a little bit higher for this year.
So, if this gets implemented next?
Can I, can we, can we have the motion on the table and then all kinds of discussion?
I'll make the motion.
Move by Wendy, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, okay, now, please.
So, next year, if this gets implemented again, it won't be at the $40, it won't be, I don't know what you call it, grandfathered or?
No, we have to renegotiate the whole.
It has to be renegotiated, okay. And it's not expected that $40 per whatever is going, is gonna be the expectation next year, cause it's gonna be a full year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. But this doesn't hold us to what we have to say next year?
And the language, just so the committee, we just can identify, the MOA is a trial for the remainder of 1920 school year. So, we put that language rate in the actual.
Okay, so it's not past practice or anything, or, okay.
No, and at that point, we would default to contractual language, which is 35. That's where we started, but because it took so long.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
Anybody else have?
So, being that there's only half a year left, and we kind of went the first half of the school year without any. Could we just make sure that whatever comes of this is, is rectified before the beginning of school for September? Whether it's staying or?
Or something else.
Something else.
Yes.
The plan in place.
Are, are there, is there any, is there a waiting list?
No.
I don't know.
Do we wanna know?
No. I just think, I, I, I do think it took a little too long for, for the need, but.
New program, new building understanding. Anybody else?
Agree.
Okay, there's a motion on, on the floor to approve a middle of understanding for restorative time supervisor for the Hartnett Middle School and Blackstone Millville Regional High School for the remainder of the 2019-20 academic school year. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Are we signing this one or is it?
We're gonna have to change to sign. You'll probably get an email to go in and sign something, if you would please, those that were here.
Can it be put in our packet for the 22nd or the 20, we have, that's the week after?
Yeah, you have it approved.
Is everybody okay with that? Yeah, we can add two.
We're also here the 25th, I believe.
We are, the 25th too, as well. There's only one, that has to go around for signatures, so.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Yep.
The next item is our FY, continuation of our FY '21 budget discussion. And we're actually focused this evening on technology, both the instructional technology and the hardware and additional resources that we will need within the technology department. So, in your packet, and Jesse will queue up in a moment, the first, which is the ed tech piece of the work. The committee had requested for us to look at some data around, you know, what is the impact, what is the usage of our current instructional, I keep calling it ed tech, but the instructional technology that we have in place in terms of providing teaching and learning opportunities for students. And so, what we did was pull together, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna mention a couple that are not here in the why behind that. We pulled together quite a bit of data, we tried to keep it really simple and just focused on usage and impact, right? So, usage is what does a student use look like, what do the teacher, what does a teacher use look like? And what's been the overall impact on either student achievement or growth? The couple that you do not see here, and I can explain that, is Language Live and Vmath at the middle school. And you'll see on, when you, when Matt gets into the budget, the technology budget review, you'll see that there's a very limited number of seats for that at the middle school. The reason that we don't have the data here, I did look at it, Julie Wolford and I reviewed everything and Tanya's reviewed it as well. They just started implementing it. So, it really, it's been out for a month in terms of the implementation. So, what, what we could have seen doesn't really say much, other than there is a unit or, or in some cases, a set of skills the kids have been working on. Most of the participation rates or the student achievement impact rates on Vmath and Language Live are zero. Or you're gonna have an inflated number because the summary data is based on one set of skills or one unit. So, it did, it just didn't make sense to share with the committee, but I'm absolutely happy to bring it back, after they've used it for a couple of months, to look at that impact data, the committee would like to see it then. The other thing that you won't see here is our STAR data, because selfishly, I'm gonna share that with you at my middle of year evaluation.
Next, next month?
And can speak very clearly to you, more than, you know, you already know, but, you know, how we're using STAR. So, those two things are not in here, just so you're aware. So, what we do have this evening, and I will walk through this at whatever pace the, the committee would like. And Jill is here too, to speak to the ASCEND math, if, if you have any specific questions with that. But this is what we are trialing with our students with special needs. And so, if you look at your first, let's see how this goes, okay. If you look at your first handout, it is broken down by school, so you can see the number of students at each level, their mean pre-assessment score and their mean post-assessment score, and then average time students are spending on it for each task.
You have a grade six circled? 21?
Yes, let me flip to that.
Sorry, did I go ahead?
Oh, it's, no, that's okay, it's level six.
Level six, okay.
Which is, we don't have any students at that particular level.
Okay, that's what I was gonna question.
So, the levels are the actual performance levels, Jill, do I have that right, of each of the students?
So, just start it, just, just so I'm understanding what I'm reading.
Please, yep.
And I'm just gonna go with the very first one, level four.
And you're looking at Millville?
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm on page one, cause they're all follow the same, so. That person at, who's ever at level, whatever, so level does not mean grade. Just means the level they're doing math at. I assume one is the lowest and it goes up, okay. And that person spent an average of two hours or so?
So, that average on there, there's so many reports that we have to spend, we just kind of wanted to give you a snapshot. So, that number there, that is.
She might wanna come up to the.
Jill, do you wanna speak at the table, just to get the?
Since, yeah, since probably, I'm not the only person with a question. Oh, no, it should be two hours, 19 minutes and 53 seconds.
On task, per student?
Yeah, I don't know.
There are a couple different ways that ASCEND gives you information on time. The one that's on here is each student enters a level, they do a pre-assessment, they enter a level, and there's specific objectives that go to that level. So, they specifically focus on that before they, you know, do the post-assessment. So, if we're looking at, I'll go back, say you're looking at that level four, that one student. That total time on task is working on specific learning objectives, the study guide for that specific skill, the videos, the practice, and then the post-assessment. We also get other numbers for time, which is called the total hours worked, which talks about the other skills the kids work on to kind of fill the gaps. They have flashcards, they have videos. So, this time on here is specifically the student working on specific objectives that have been identified from the pre-assessment. This doesn't include the teacher interaction time, it doesn't include the other types of activities they're doing. But just to kind of give you a sense, so that one student on level four took their pre-assessment, that's the number of hours just on those skills they worked.
For level four.
For level four, and then they reached their 95% on that. So, you'll see that they only improved 8.9, but they didn't have a long way to go.
Right, right. And then they get to move on to level five or whatever comes next?
Right, so then they go in, they do their pre-assessment again, you know, the new level, and they identify specific skills. So, when you hit a level, you're not working on every single skill on that level, you're working on what are the areas you need.
Right.
Yes, so they'll identify those needs, so it's focused.
And is this particular program specifically designed for special education?
We have students, yes. Some schools do use it, I will tell you, as a tier three, but there is, it's evidence-based with students with disabilities. Cause remember, it's a program that, it's not just kids, just do it on your own. There's videos, there's teachers' teaching, the lesson, and there's, there's handouts, there, it's very individualized for those students. So, this gives you an idea of where students started and the progress that we're seeing. So, our hope is, I saw some of the preliminary things, I'm not gonna share any, but it's really nice to see that our teachers right now have been working really hard with our Planning and Teaching Learning Coach to find the balance between having the students access, for example, at the elementary, the invisions, finding the balance between that and the ASCEND to kind of fill in the gaps.
So, just as a budgetary question about how many students are on this right now currently?
There's approximately 104 students who are engaged in ASCEND.
And what is the cost of ASCEND?
It's per student, I don't have the.
It's per student, yeah. And do we have?
I couldn't find it on here.
Oh, I think it's in, I think it's in Jill's.
It's in the special education.
Let's say it's not in.
Okay.
And it's per student, and we do have the extra seats, cause kids can come on and off.
Right.
And remember, these are our students who really need that. So, if you have a student who's saying inclusion math and they're doing great, they just need kind of the modification of the way it's being taught. But we have about 104 right now who are engaged in that, either when they're pulled out of a class, you know, for a special ed class or during their academic support, to kind of fill in those gaps, cause that's what we're missing.
We included it here, cause we know it's a huge focus of our work.
So, I, but, so I'm gonna go back to my, so I have a student, they, they started in this level, they worked for two hours and something on this task. They improved to 95, which will hopefully take them to the next level or whatever. That two hours is not consecutive time. That's over the course of a month, so year, this recording time was?
So, the recording time is from the time they, it could be different for all kids.
It's always gonna be different, okay.
It is gonna be different. But I think what's good is it's giving us the idea and then we're gonna be able to see on STAR is there, that carryover. But again, the, the focus is, no, that not, our students just don't work in ASCEND math. They are engaging in a balance, and that's what we're working very hard this year, to find that balance for, for teachers.
I just wanna point out, speaking about the varied times, I'm just flipping through this as well, and on the. And on the, there's one on level seven, which is the last page of the Ascend math.
It started forty-two percent.
And this, this individual, it looks like three people averaged nine hours and twenty-two minutes on that task and saw a gain in score of thirty-seven point two percent. That's tremendous work.
In those specific objectives, it's focused.
Yep, that is tremendous growth.
Hey, I'm looking at the person who only spent two hours, went from forty-two to eighty.
Yeah, but remember, it's not just that that helps.
Well, I know.
Yeah, there's other things in there.
But it's a specific skill.
It's a skill, yeah.
Right, but in its skills that not teachers are guessing at. It's the skill that they're identifying through that pre-assessment, so it's very focused.
And I think what I hear you saying, Jill, is that we're working on finding the hybrid or the balance between the core invisions program at, at the elementary level in particular, and then how do we marry Ascend in with that?
Correct, because we have to backfill, we need to fill the gaps. Because if we don't do that, we're gonna continue to move our kids forward, and the gap's gonna, they're really not gonna get it. So yes, it's absolutely finding the balance.
Great, thank you, Jill. You might as well stay there, because you never know, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I can, I don't think I have any other ones.
Sure, so shifting gears, looking at IXL. So what we did was, we put the summary sheet together, so that the committee can see the work that's happening on ELA and math combined. So you're looking at an overall summary, and so the first slide is on JFK. So you can see we ran that as recent as the eleventh of February. We tried to get as most up-to-date data as we could. And the students at JFK have mastered one thousand six hundred and one skills. They are, yup, combined with ELA and math. They are proficient, their skills proficient are nineteen hundred twelve, and the skills practiced are thirty-three hundred forty. You can see the total number of hours at the bottom of practice the kids have put into this, four hundred and six. Three hundred forty-nine of those are at school, fifty-seven at home, and then the number of questions answered. So we tried to just get a snapshot of, but again, like Jill was mentioning with Ascend, there, there are more reports here than, you know, we could spend the whole time on that. You could look at skills, you could look at individual student growth, achievement, and all of those skills. We were just trying to find a snapshot to get a sense of the committee, so you can see how much the kids are working on this. If you look at Millville, you can see again, twenty-seven hundred fifty skills mastered, thirty-one hundred thirty-nine skills proficient, but forty-three hundred thirty-nine skills practiced on ELA and math together, with a total of nine hundred seventy-five hours of practice time kids are working with this. Seven hundred eighty-five at school, hundred ninety at home.
So you may not know this off the top of your head, but I'm going back JFK.
Sure.
Four hundred and six hours, and how many students are in JFK?
About two hundred and fifty.
And how many in Millville?
About two hundred and fifty, but the pre-K students are not on this, and.
Kindergarten, it's really hard with kindergarten and first grade.
Not really, yeah, they're really not engaged on this.
But they, but they started it.
First grade is getting there.
Right.
Relatively at the beginning of the year, like it started in Septem, so September. So nine hundred and seventy-five hours for two hundred and fifty kids is really impressive.
You can see someone with a homework, you can see which ones give homework.
Homework.
Too, it's, it's, it's a good, these are impressive numbers for IXL.
And if you back K out at Millville and you back pre-K out, that's eighty kids you can take out of the two fifty. So you're really looking at one seventy.
And you have a ELA and math or?
Yes, yup.
Together.
Yup.
And that's what's budgeted for next year, is just ELA and math?
And math, yup. Although I do believe there's.
Do you have a science?
Yeah, Matt's gonna, no. Okay.
I mean, they're, they're using a lot more, it looks like, in Millville.
I was just gonna say, at home.
Is there a reason?
Well, JFK again is only kindergarten.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah. You gotta wait till the next one.
Look at the home hours.
Yeah, look at, look at Maloney.
The home hours.
If you take the JFK and the Maloney together, you'll see.
Or I would say compare Millville and Maloney.
It's set up that way because of the code in Aspen.
I get it now.
Yeah, it's like a weird, so it still runs reports like that.
So AF Maloney has about how many students?
They have the same, about two fifty.
Oh, well, it's a lovely two fifty.
They're not using it for homework.
They're not using it at home.
No.
Just in the classroom, but a lot in the classroom, a lot. I mean, they're mastering a lot.
Well, I don't know, I, I really like this program because it gets harder and harder for those kids that need the enrichment, and it also gets, I mean, it gets easy, it gets, they give lessons for those if you get it wrong.
If.
It's adaptive.
It's adaptive, it helps parents.
And it's step-by-step, it's not, there's hints, there's, but it's, if it's not used.
Right.
And, and practice at home is, is important as practice in school.
Middle school.
If you look at the middle school, you can see the middle school has almost four thousand skills mastered.
How many students they have?
Four hundred and forty. And skills proficient, fifty-six hundred, skills practiced, twelve thousand. You can see the number of hours at school versus home, and then the total number of questions answered, about half a million. It's, I know it sounds funny, but.
Can we separate out math and ELA? Not right now, not.
I thought you might ask.
Oh, well.
Cost-wise?
And I wanna see if I have it here.
No.
Oh, oh, you mean time-wise?
Are they using it more for math or using it more for ELA?
I, well, because Jane's gonna do her math right now.
Cost-wise, it's about eleven thousand a piece.
And.
Yes, we can break it down for math and English.
Okay, thank you.
Yup, I did, you know what's crazy was, I thought someone would ask, and I brought that, I thought I had that packet, but I must have left it on my desk.
Well, I think.
I did run them separate.
It leads to the question, budgetarily, how much is the math and reading? And then if we're using both of them?
Both of them.
Because you can buy it as a.
That is how we, that's, we purchase it as the math and ELA for the entire district, and that runs about nineteen thousand dollars. Plus, we have optional professional development with it. And as Dr. DeValgo mentioned, the middle school did ask to look at including science, social studies, and Spanish, which we held back on, but that additional, that additional cost is approximately five thousand dollars for, for those additional subjects, just for those middle-level grades.
So personally, I love how they're using it in school. I guess I would encourage any parent that might ever listen to us to use it at home as practice, because, I mean, they're not, that's not even an hour per student.
But, but I also think it needs to go out often. I think those, those passwords, you have second graders, third, they need to be out often. It's like, it's like if you send it out in, in the beginning of the year, I, I'll be honest with four kids, I, I'm shuffling to find where it is. So I think often is, is really important, especially on a newsletter. I mean, we get the newsletters, I think, every week, and just reminding parents, this is the username and password, and also for the Myon, it, it's the same thing. It's just that constant, oh yeah, I forgot we had that, you know, it, it, that would be key in this going up, but these numbers are still high.
Yeah.
And I think as we are thinking about, from the budget, clearly, and the impact and the usage, right, which was the whole purpose of this piece that the committee had requested, you're gonna see on March third, a full presentation from the elementary, middle, and high school teachers on the literacy committee. And we've got to make some difficult decisions around how much is too much. You know, what are we using, what do our new programs have, what can we, you know, eliminate? Because our new programs that we're gonna recommend to the committee are incredibly comprehensive, with a lot of components to them that could mirror and resemble some of this, not all of it, but some of it. Not the Ascend, Jill, but the IXL work, news, ELA perhaps. So we've got to be thinking about some of that. The high school, you can see the numbers are far less
Yeah.
in terms of its use.
But it's, but in terms of purchasing, you purchase a district.
Yes.
So the cost is probably somewhat similar, even though the numbers are lower at the high school, right?
Yes.
If you were to do it per student, all of our three schools and the high school?
They do, they do, I believe, do it based on brackets of students.
Right.
So if we were to choose to say the high school's not maximizing the use of it, what would it look like? I could definitely get a, a different quote. I don't know how much it would change, but.
Yeah.
I'm gonna guess minimally.
Yeah, me too. That's why I'm thinking like.
Since we've been paying it already.
Is it okay to move forward, we can look at Myon? And you probably, I, I tweet this stuff out all the time. And we currently, as our last report, which we ran, I think it was Monday or Tuesday of this week, again, we try to get it right to the last minute. You can see the number of students enrolled at each grade level, you can see their average lexile, such as the reading level they're on, the number of books finished, and the time spent reading. And so, big shout-out to our elementary kids.
Yeah, no kidding, huh?
Pretty awesome that, in our elementary.
Second, third, and fourth grade.
Huge. Five thousand six hundred eighty-three books finished, with a total of one thousand six hundred fifty-six hours and thirty-four minutes of time on reading. And if you remember the goal, the entire goal of Myon was just getting eyes on text.
Right.
We wanted to make sure that kids are able to do that, and now I'm really pleased because Myon has updated their infrastructure, and kids don't need Wi-Fi anymore. As soon as they have their device in a Wi-Fi area, they can download up to twelve books right on their device. So it used to be that you actually had to be in Wi-Fi to get the, to actually get the text, it's not the case anymore. So kids can actually download on their device the, the books, and there's over six thousand books available for students, and quizzes and things that parents can log into to track all this by their student and same for teachers. But I wanna be clear here that the goal was just to get kids reading, and get them passionate about reading, passionate about reading. And when you're reading on a device, nobody knows what you're reading, and that's important. So you, you know, you, if you walk into a classroom at any given moment, you will see kids on their tablets, and they're all working on Myon, and they don't know what the other one's reading. One kid could be reading a third-grade book, the other kid's reading an eighth-grade book, and sitting next to each other, they wouldn't know. And so that's just important, so kids can read at their level and not feel uncomfortable with that.
Is there a home versus school separation in terms of Myon?
No, it's the same, yeah. They log it all, I was looking for that, they log it all the same.
Okay.
And the sixth grader and the ninth grader got a password somehow, or?
Yeah, that's, I'm not sure where that came from, apparently there's ones, it could have been.
They're not reading, they're not doing anything.
It could be a coding issue that, through Aspen, all of this is, the student lists and classes are all driven through Aspen, our student information system, so. Julie Wolford does just a phenomenal job, by the way, of, she manages all of these systems, which is a ton of work, keeping everybody's system and program up to date. Moving on to the news ELA. And so the first sheet is the middle school. So you'll see, and again, trying to find the right reports to, to pull, there's just, there's so much information. So we tried to find a summary sheet. So you can see from July till February eleventh, our students at the middle school are in the average of the fiftieth percentile. You can see the number of students at each level, the number of quizzes taken, and then, you know, of course, the number of teachers, but. Go ahead.
So I know that there's two different price brackets for Newzella. Is that correct, there's like an extensive version, and then, so the, the, the reports are, this report was my question, because I noticed, I, I know with Newzella, they come with like five-question quizzes, and they're nonfiction pieces, which are excellent.
Yup.
But my question is, you know, if you look at the quiz averages of sixty, sixty-two, if you flip the, you know, so the question is, the, the articles are great, but how it's utilized with the quizzes is, is a different question. So if there's a complete version of Newzella, and I know it's very extensive and pricey versus a, a different, the, the lower version, you know, I would be curious, because we are going to be talking about the literacy program that's coming in. And these numbers are more concerning than any of the other numbers, so I'm wondering how effective this actually was based off of looking at the, whatever I'm looking at here, so that was really, it was.
It's interesting, because the, I'm sorry, Jill.
No, go ahead.
The data is, the, the usage data, so if the number of quizzes taken
Right.
is, is strong, but the performance is not compelling. Like, we're definitely missing something.
Right, and they're hard. These four questions are extremely difficult, but in terms of, of being successful, you know, so the kids take, take it, they read the articles, and the articles are amazing. I mean, you compare them with everything, but then they go and take a quiz, and then the quiz pops up, and you have out of four questions, you have a, you know, twenty, you know, so where do you go with that information? Is just my, my.
Well, and I, I would wager a guess that you have to, you'd have to have discussion with instructors, with the teachers, of whether they're using it as a, a quiz focus, or whether they're really using it as, the articles as discussion focus. Because they come in text sets, and they come, you know, you're building on your topic. Like, these are probably not often, like, English cla, cla, there's probably a social studies class, or there could be a science class that's reading an article, or there could be a technology class that's doing. So it, it may not even be reading these articles for the quiz purpose. It may be.
Usage though is still on the lower end too, so.
Wendy, I, to your point, I, I can't say definitively a hundred percent. I believe that this is the full comprehensive program. The cost for just the middle school and the high school is eight thousand dollars. I don't know if there's a higher tier, but.
No, I think that, in terms of what you get, like, like we could get.
There was a free version, and what happened was, a lot of our teachers had free versions, so they already had logins, and then we purchased the, as much as we could purchase.
Right, and so there's a, there's a, there's a level that lets you break it down by reading level, lock it, like, there's certain aspects that, that's a level, and then there's the free version. Well, it's not free anymore, you only get that for one year, but you still get that same.
So no, there's a free, there's a free version, but you are limited in the text you're allowed to access. And then you can still print by lexile score, you can still assign by lexile score to the student to read, but then you're not, you're not, you can't access the quizzes, you can't access. But there's still a free version.
Right, but there's also like a very extensive version that lets you manipulate the data. So some of the, if we're not manipulating, and it's, it's a lot of information, but if you're not manipulating it to the usage, to, to what you're using it for, you know, the articles are amazing to use for instruction.
Yup.
I don't think there's a, a version higher than the one that we're paying for, but I can.
That was, that was just my question.
Yeah, I think we are paying for the platinum subscription, but I, we can check on that.
And when I met with the middle school and the high school teachers, their literacy teacher.
There's a lot of that.
Yeah, and they, it was interesting, because they really felt so strongly about New Zealand. They all spoke to it, and I think it's because of the text selection.
Right.
It's just really good.
Yeah, it is.
It's meaty, it's rich, it's, it's hard, to your point. But it's really interesting, because you look at this versus an IXL, you know, clearly IXL is, it's got a, it's got a different objective to it, right, than something like New Zealand, so. But yeah, as far as the results, the student results, the data is not, not very compelling regarding proficiency. And then the last of, of course, is the high school. And the last kind of ed tech piece, or instructional piece, is our summary of our VHS, which we spent about sixteen thousand on, so for, for forty seats. So I wanted to share with the committee and community what this looks like. So the yellow on the left is the high school, the green on the right, of course, is the middle school, and then the two columns at the end are just the seats used. The reason it's broken down like that is because you've got some classes by semester, so S one is semester one. If you look underneath that in the yellow, FY is full year, and then the VHS ocean, oceanology class is semester two. So you can see out of the forty seats, we've used thirty-one this year. We've got nine unfilled. And it's interesting, and speaking with the guidance staff, some of the guidance staff about this, we've enrolled more than that, but we've had some kids that have, that have dropped the class within that window where you can add drop. Because what was anecdotal, but what was shared back with me was that the students, some, some students think that they're gonna really enjoy that type of learning and get into it and find it's really difficult, because, you know, you have a teacher in front of you, you're working on an electronic platform. So, but wanted you to be able to see here the courses our kids are enrolled in this year, both middle and high school, the number of seats that we've used of that.
This is just the high school?
And the green is the middle.
The green is middle, okay.
Yeah, middle schoolers have taken engineering, World War II, Through the Eyes of Dr. Seuss, I kinda wanna take that, like, that sounds really interesting.
Yeah.
Pre-algebra, and the rest of the courses are there.
Doesn't sound interesting.
Not so much, but.
It does, it does to me.
No one took it.
Yeah, working on that at home with my eighth grader right now. So again, the Vmath. So, again, the Vmath in Language Live, we can, I can give you an update later on that to give you a better sense of what that looks like. And STAR report, we'll see for my middle-of-year evaluation in March twelfth. Is this, is this what folks were kind of wanting to get the sense, okay, many want to get the sense of?
I think I, when I requested this, I just wanted to make sure that the usage is being, for the cost-
Yeah.
That the usage was happening.
Absolutely.
It looks like it is.
It's a juice worth a squeeze. And shifting gears, Matt's going to take us through the technology budget review.
Sure. Do you want me to sit over there, or can I do it from here?
Thank you, Jill. Wherever you're comfortable.
I'll sit, I'll stay here. So, I'd like, I'd like to start by saying, Dan Saltzman, our consultant from, oh, great. I was going to say, Dan Saltzman, our consultant from DG Networks, was going to be here on Tuesday. Unfortunately, when we changed the date, his family is leaving for a vacation trip, and he was unable to make it today. So, it, it will be, I thought it was. Quite honestly, much of the technology budget for this year... Sorry, I don't have, do you have the clicker? I don't know if the other... Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
There you go. So... I'm not sure what direction we're going in. Okay. So, I'll actually start from the bottom of this page. Most of what we have this year is going to be part of the expenses for next year. I tried to make this very clear. Everything is the same, and I've highlighted in yellow the new things that we are looking to introduce for next year. As you can see with respect to the instructional technology, the middle school has asked for EdPuzzle Pro, which has videos that they put together, and this is for a full license, so that they could store the videos and have more than, I believe, ten videos. I believe Tanya spoke to this in her-
She did.
-presentation. And the other piece was just the introduction of the Vmath program into the sixth grade, as they're using that as their primary math intervention program. From the administrative expenses, all of those items in that bucket are the stuff we use to run the school system. And there are some, I believe, there's some stuff that connects to the students, like Go Guardian, but that's really for teachers to be able to monitor what the students are doing, so it's not specifically teaching the students. What's highlighted on there is a server replacement project. I, that's why I was hoping Dan would be here to explain this a little better. But, I can speak to the fact that we have a number of servers in this district that are aging poorly. And we are putting together a plan to systematically replace the servers and back them up one at a time, and then, replace them, so that they'll have an extended life period, hopefully, for another ten years or so. And we're starting in twenty-one with this, it's a one-server replacement. So, including the software and the server, it will be approximately a ten-thousand-dollar project.
And, and you may not know, but you know how many we have total?
I don't know, I know there's at least-
Fifty or hundreds?
No, I think there's one in every school, there's one in every school, and I, there might be one or two additional running specific pieces. So, like, the servers control the configurations of the wireless, of the network. They're, they're, they house important systems, like our Budget Sense is housed on a specific server, which we run all of our financials through. So, I pray that one doesn't fail, and we get that replaced and up to date.
So, we'd look to maybe do one a year?
Yep, we're trying to do it systematically and not-
Yep.
-take a sixty-thousand-dollar dump in one year, and we'll do it. And they have a plan, so that the servers are going to be kind of reallocated based on the condition of the servers to the needs of what it's doing. So, we're going to get the best, most effective servers that we have, backing up and using the most important information, and we're going to replace one, and so on and so forth. The last piece that you'll see, I'm not sure where it is on this, it might have gone away.
Right there.
On the top, I don't, oh, it is, it's just that one section, I apologize. I thought that was the plan when I glanced up. So, the last section you'll see is the FY twenty-one new lease that we're introducing for the elementary school Chromebooks. This will be the first year of a four-year lease, and we're estimating a twenty-thousand-dollar cost. That's to purchase over seventy-thousand dollars' worth of equipment. And if you take a look at the next sheet that you have, which is labeled Elementary Devices, so, currently, what we have in the elementary schools for Chromebooks or devices, Grades two and three have tablets, which are functional, and they've been helpful for them to access Myon. But, a lot of the teachers have been saying that they would really like to try to get their kids on Chromebooks. They are able to every now and then, because the rest of the elementary schools work on Chromebook carts. So, no class sets of Chromebooks, they move between class to class, and sometimes, you can't get them. Working with the teachers and assessing the needs that they establish for their classroom organization, kindergarten teachers discussed, they don't necessarily need a Chromebook cart, but they'd like to have a few Chromebooks per classroom to do stations. Yep, to do centers with the students. So, this plan will include four Chromebooks per class for each of the kindergarten classes. And you can see the devices that are needed will be twenty-four for six different kindergarten classes. Grades one and two also said, we could share Chromebooks between a couple of classes. So, the plan is to introduce one cart for approximately every two classes. There might be one cart that gets shared between three classes, but, for the most part, they'll have access to it regularly, and they can switch on and off. And then, three through five, the plan is to have a Chromebook cart in each classroom, and they will be going one-to-one.
But, but, the cart, the Chromebook will stay in the classroom?
Correct.
It's not like the other grades where they go home and-
Correct, it's not like the middle school or the high school. So, if you see the carts needed, those are the numbers of carts that will need to house the Chromebooks in the classrooms and in the school buildings. These Chromebooks will not be leaving. Didn't think it would be good for a third grader to be taking a Chromebook back and forth. Or a fifth.
Or a sixth.
I was just going to say, I worry about the sixth out of the eighth. I certainly don't want to put it in the hands of a fifth. Are there any questions about this plan?
So, this, these three hundred and ten Chromebooks and, or devices, and fourteen carts is the twenty-thousand-dollar lease.
Yes, so, if you see, we already have two hundred and thirty-two Chromebooks, so, we're going to redeploy those. It may, depending on the, the status of the Chromebooks next year, of the two hundred and thirty-two that we have, we may need to increase the lease slightly, but I don't anticipate it being a significant amount. So, it should be, if it goes to twenty-five thousand a year, that would be a huge increase in the devices that we purchased. So, I'm estimating that it will be around twenty thousand.
Part of the need for the Chromebooks for those grades are for MCAS testing?
Yep.
Wendy, is that effective for?
They've already been doing.
It already is all, so they have to share them though, up there?
Well, you know, and, yeah, and so much of the, so much of our core, I'm sorry, Matt, so much of our core curriculum now, there's just, it's, there's so many of the curriculum have electronic platforms-
Yes.
-that, you know, it's STEM scopes, or, which you'll see wonders in a couple of weeks. There's just the online component significant.
I have a question. I'm really excited to see that this is transforming, because I think we've been, all been here when we had nothing. My only concern is how are we going to manage the breakdown of the three hundred and ten additional Chromebooks? For, and they break, I mean, they're really solid pieces, but-
They're also kids, and they break, so how are we-
So, actually, I shouldn't say, that twenty-thousand-dollar lease is for three hundred and forty Chromebooks-
Oh.
-to start us off with thirty spares. That's the number of, that's the number of Chromebooks needed specifically to fill the classrooms.
Right.
But, we've anticipated a certain amount of breakage, about ten percent.
So, it still leads me to that question of who's, how is, what's the plan for the, the-
So, we actually, so-
For staffing to-
Or staff, because I know that, I mean, I have somebody in my room pretty consistently switching out a key, switching out a, it's just-
We have, we have a staff member that specifically works almost full-time on our Chromebooks.
Yeah.
The ones we currently have. Now, we're going to add an additional three hundred and forty, so that one person's going to handle all of the Chromebooks?
Yep, they're not constantly fixing the Chromebooks, it's a matter of getting them out, because on our Chromebooks, we take out insurance policies. So, when they break, we ship them out, we get new ones back.
And that's why you have the additional in there.
Yep, and we have the additional to put it in as a loner while that transition is taking place.
All right, great. That was my question, because that's a lot of Chromebooks, and so, I was wondering. Well, I know we, we have somebody who manages our technology, so that's, you know-
And I will say that the librarians at the schools have also been very helpful in dealing with some of the Chromebook stuff. Kids, it's a very central place, so kids will come and say, my Chromebook's not working, they'll drop it off there. So, it's not necessarily one person trying to run all over the place and figure out which Chromebooks are broken. But, there is a system in place for it.
Great. I have one more question. Is there professional development going to be rolled out for the elementary that have never been exposed to, you know, this amount of Chromebook use because of the, the platforms that are available? Is there professional development for those teachers?
Yeah, so, the good news is, on some of the, on some of these, like IXL, Myon, STEM scopes, we've started it. So, teachers now are kind of pushing and pulling what they have from each other, because they want to get in and start doing more of that in terms of utilizing these platforms. And when we roll out, if we have approval for our new literacy program, we will, of course, then, put the PD plan in place for that. What we have done is made sure that the training we're doing with them and have done with them is embedded in the material. So, we haven't done, you know, you know, like, Chromebook training, but we've done STEM scopes training using the Chromebooks, or we've done Myon training using the technology. Do you, does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question is actually around Google Classroom, because I know it can be very effective. And I know the middle school uses Google Classroom for everything, so if we, if we could get, you know, the professionals-
Yes, I understand what you're asking now.
You know what I mean?
We have not done enough of that at the elementary level, absolutely.
Because there was no need, but I think when you're getting the Chromebooks and, and there's these opportunities to have Google self-correct things quickly, and, you know, you're utilizing it to another level. So, I want to be able to utilize it in the best way you can. And I think we have professionals in our district that could actually do the teaching-
Oh, sure.
-of Google, of Google Classroom and-
I didn't understand your question, I'm sorry, yeah.
Reading groups and stuff, I think you, just maximize what you can do with the Chromebook.
That makes perfect sense.
Definitely. I just want to make sure that that's available to them, just to-
Yep.
Great point.
So, can I go back to the budget review?
Certainly.
Is our contract with our technology provider person, assistant-
Consultant?
Consultant, in here?
Yes.
Where?
It's in the administrative expenses under Network Administration Contract.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
Yep.
And that's the same as it was before?
That is the same as it was before.
Okay, and that has been well worth our time and money and energy and-
I certainly believe so. I think the biggest snag we hit, which we talked about in the beginning of the school year, was knowing what systems needed to be updated and rolled over, you know? Like, so, all the different data systems we looked at earlier, and then, the ones that aren't in there, like Envisions and those kinds of things. So, we hit, definitely hit some bumps in the road in the beginning of the year with that.
We also introduced a number of new systems right at the onset of this school year, including all of the new Chromebooks that came in. We introduced the voice-over IP system with the phones, and we introduced the security cameras that were all computer-accessed as well. So, there was just a lot going on. But, certainly, our technology department has kind of come over the crest of that wave, and they've all expressed the fact that things are running smoothly and that-
No need for more steps.
I don't think the users felt it. I think we did, like, we felt it. But, I don't think, I think by and logic, the kids and families, it was fairly seamless. I think we, the teachers felt a, definitely felt the snag with the Envisions, the Pearson accounts, for sure. Like, we were trying to roll those over ourselves, trying to figure this out. But, I think really, by and large, that was the only, on the user end.
I can speak to Dan's philosophy on technology briefly. He will say at any given point, his, his idea for technology in a school is not to have all the bells and whistles and have people wondering how to use this and how to use that and going to the next level. It's to have people not even think about it.
Yep, it just works and it's there.
It's there, you know how to use the systems, and they're working flawlessly, and that's it. Kind of falls into the background.
And I think consistency with Chromebooks is important too, even with the kids, because they'll, if they use it at an early age, even if there's four in a kindergarten classroom, you know, going from a Chromebook to an iPad to a different device, that can get really messy too. So, I think it's important to have that.
That's been a huge, that's been a huge movement of ours as well, is we've moved off of the Windows platform, and we really are going to a Google-based.
Anybody else?
My pleasure.
I think it's still you, though.
I think it's still me.
Across my page.
Yeah, that concludes my report, business office.
What do I have first on the agenda?
Total revenue.
Total revenue.
I lost my page, but-
I will make this section of the meeting pretty brief. Things are going well with our revenue, everything is coming in as anticipated, we haven't had any snags. We are expecting some additional revenue that was not budgeted for from the, there is a, an FY nineteen additional money that's coming out, and there's also FY twenty additional money coming out. It's a little bit, that may be a few thousand dollars. So, when people hear about the governors releasing the supplemental budget, I don't want anyone to think that this is going to be a tremendous influx, but it hopefully will be a few thousand dollars that we can put to use. What has the potential to be a little bit more than a few thousand dollars, but we're not sure of what those amounts are going to be, though they will be announced in March towards the end, is they are doing a supplemental for the regional transportation reimbursement. So, depending on what percentage they're increasing that by, that could be significant. Right now, they did a supplemental circuit breaker, and I think they increased everyone's percentage by point six percent. So, again, it'll be a few thousand dollars coming in. But, otherwise, we're in good shape. If you look at the expenditure review, again, I've highlighted the new things that have popped up, just to address them. None of them are significant, I should add. We've discussed, as I said, all of the other little side notes, we've discussed. There are some, there has been an increase in the regular classroom teachers, and that's just been because of faculty changes. We have had some movement in the school leadership because of adjustments that were made to principals' salaries. And also, there was, yeah, there were just some that were potentially a little bit under-budgeted, and also, there were increases introduced that were retroactive. So, that brought everyone up to where it was supposed to be, and we're seeing that small difference. That school committee line that you see, again, there was a, we had an audit for our OPEB just to get the assessment of the value, and that was not budgeted for for this year. So, the majority of that was the cost of the OPEB assessment. Any questions on anything else in the expenditures? You have the personnel report included, not to be discussed publicly. And if there are any questions, please feel free to email me and/or Monique, and we'll address whatever it is that we can. Regarding the facilities, so, the JFK AFM boilers and windows, the punch list was, the punch list walkthrough was conducted with the designers and the contractors on the seventh of February. And everything was identified that are the small things, just to tie up the project, and it's expected that all of these things will be completed during the February break. it's expected that all of these things will be completed during the February break. Regarding the roof at the complex, the insurance company has provided us with a claim amount, and now we're working with the town and vendors to try to make sure that we're getting those repairs scheduled and put into place. It is a little bit difficult, as you would expect, running, having run into the winter season, and they're, the big issue being that there's no safety equipment on, on the roof. Any type of frost or snow could be extremely hazardous, so we are looking to get this probably started as the weather warms up a bit. Elementary boiler update for Millville, the designer and the OPM sent the 90% design plans to MSBA's commissioning agent. They have to review what the plans are and then make comment, and then they'll return it back to us. That was sent on the 4th, we have not heard back from the commissioning agent yet.
Question on that.
Sure.
When the capital plan, when we're speaking, they mentioned the summer, so we're still on target, hopefully, to do that project over the summer?
Yes.
And another question, is that the reason why some of those classrooms are 100 degrees right now? Is it the boiler? I don't know, I.
Can't speak to that specifically, but.
The school same thing?
Same thing.
Yeah, I can't.
Wasn't wearing shorts for like the last month, because his classroom was so hot.
Shorts and a winter jacket? Shorts and a winter jacket?
He's like, I just boil that every day, and I brought all the parents pipe up, too, so I didn't know if.
That's fine. I was going to say, I wouldn't be surprised if that's one of the things that our capital assessment identifies, is the controls.
Yeah.
So, we've been replacing the equipment to make it more energy-efficient and get the most for our money, but the controls are still another factor, which they're pneumatic controls in the classrooms, and sometimes it's, you know, teachers.
That one room takes the hit, and the rest are.
One room, exactly.
It's been that way for, it's been that way for a long time, too. I know, I know at the complex, I mean, it can get really hot.
Yep. So, to that end, regarding the complex getting really hot, we did for a few, for a couple of, a few thousand dollars, we actually have a, a plan in place where an electrician is going to be coming in and installing toggle switches to the, to the blowers.
Right.
For the complex, so that instead of teachers leaving it on high and opening their windows, they can shut their blower off.
Right.
So, that, so my hope is that a few thousand dollars, that will pay for itself within a season.
Is that, is that soon, or is that at the end?
I believe the work is going to be done over the February break, but I would have to double-check.
Yeah, I just know as a, as a learner, that can be very difficult to try to focus when it's that hot.
That was, we gave that, we gave that the okay.
Yep.
It was under a 5,000, it was a $5,000 project. We know that we'll have enough to cover it, and I, as I said, I think the savings even in one season could potentially.
And that's at the complex.
That's at the complex, all, the entire complex.
So, can I go back to the boiler for a minute? Yeah. Can I go back to the boiler update?
Yes.
Does that 90% design plan include where they're putting the tanks?
Yes.
And, so that's been decided?
The, yes, the town, the, the town of Millville agreed that they were going to, we were going to put the tanks underground, where the current footprint is for the oil tank, because we're going to be excavating that anyway, so it'll just simply be removing additional ledge and, and making it compatible, and.
Okay.
Rocking tanks going in the ground.
That sounds easy.
I thought they said they wouldn't do that.
I thought.
No.
There was too much rock, but that's okay. That's great, okay. So, Millville knows that already.
I confirm that, I, I can't say that there was a recent, specific vote on it, but while, when the plans were getting moved forward, we reached out to the town administrator. It was everyone's recollection that, at the finance committee and at the meetings, that the, the agreement was to put it underground.
Okay, great.
I haven't taken out, but I didn't, I thought that was an option. Missed that part.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the high school secure vestibule, the designs have been completed, they've been approved by the town inspector, and right now, we're shopping out to try to get someone to do the project. We have heard back from one contractor that said they're not interested. A lot of the contractors that we have to go out to have large projects, and we're coming into the time of year as it starts to warm up, that they're going to be doing, they're going to be doing a lot of things. I do have a specific vendor that I've been working with that has expressed interest in the project, so I'm hoping that that will come to fruition and that we'll be able to move forward with, with that, and we'll get the job done during the April break. That's the expectation. The sewage pump station at Early Village, this will be the last time that you see this on the facilities update. The one that was going to take eight weeks, it's in, it's installed, and it's functioning properly. And I actually had done this a little bit before tonight, and they will be, the capital planning RFP, they're going to be presenting.
Right now, earlier.
Any questions on the facilities?
Thank you, Matt.
My pleasure.
School committee forum, does anybody have any, yeah.
I'm just typing up, I know Jacob had done the BMR sports stuff, I think our hockey teams, because they're co-op, they get forgotten, but the boys wrapping up, they have their last game on Saturday, and I know there's one girl on the, on, we co-op with the golf hockey team. I'm not sure how the season went either, but.
With Bellingham as well, or with Auburn?
No, Auburn, yeah.
Oh.
Yep, so, just, don't forget about those guys.
Anyone else?
I just have, out in the hall, if you're a middle schooler, there's about three tables full of the three tables. Your face and Adidas, and if your child is going home without a jacket, it's probably on that table, and you might want to send them in.
I thought it was a collection, I thought it was a Goodwill selection.
It's all lost and found, and there is a lot of lost and found, so.
A lot of expensive items.
How'd you go home with your stuff?
Gym.
Gym speakers.
But there's a lot, I mean, we could have AR sale.
Be missing.
Very expensive stuff.
Parents should look in their middle schoolers closets, be sure.
It's pretty, pretty extensive out there, so make sure you.
If, if parents came, would they be allowed in to look? I know I was looking throughout myself online.
Start posting pictures.
So, we had the honor roll.
That might be, that's a great idea.
Although, there's still a lot there. There's still a lot there.
They're donating everything at the end of the week.
Well, Erin actually had a really great idea to put it on, put it on their, their.
To hire a full-time person.
Do a quick scan of it.
Takes them a couple hours.
Post it somewhere, but, I mean, that's expense, that's.
I know.
So, essentially, it has to go home tomorrow, or it's being donated.
They are, yeah.
It is?
Yes.
Yeah.
They have put message out, upon message, upon message.
For that fundraiser.
That's the nurse's office, does she need any of that before?
Yeah, really.
I'm sure she has her mesh.
Or the elementary school nurse's office, it'll fit.
Yeah, it's a lot of stuff. Wow, I'll be back on, tomorrow afternoon.
I mean, parents, to be fair, they're all in this week.
Let me know.
Pick you up. Okay, all right. So, again, those listing, if you have a child in the middle school, all of their lost and found is out on a table, and.
For one more day.
One more day.
It's being donated tomorrow.
I have to do a Facebook Live, just to show people.
It's a lot of stuff.
Okay, moving on. Anyone else? All right, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares are not, and we will adjourn in executive session not to return to open, open session. Anybody want to make?
No, moved.
Second?
Second.